Good evening. Today is Monday, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We'll now call the City Council's special meeting to order at five forty-five P. M. Item number two is roll call. We do have a quorum of council. Item number three are public comments. Did they second agree with any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have public comments.
Okay.
Bruce Zabrowski. Mr. Zabrowski, please state your name and address for the record, and please have the opportunity to do a three-minute time limit. Thank you.
Bruce Zabrowski, seven nine one five, Chancel, Houston, Texas. I'd like to address the ethics of this so-called Ethics Commission of Missouri City. It goes by the standards of what you people have. It's not an independent body. Why does it take so many minutes to determine that somebody broke the Texas Opens Meetings Act who serves on this council? It's becoming a game and a show, showman nonsense. It's just total nonsense. Something needs to be done. It needs to be an independent council that doesn't have oversight from City Council and independent of any city attorney being present. A determination should have been made long ago because it was public record because it happened right in this room, and I expect some action on it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comment.
All right. Thank you. Item number four, discussion and possible action. For A to receive a presentation and hold a discussion temporary signs. We have a presentation by Jennifer Thomas Gomez, Director of Development Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. How's everyone?
Good evening.
I'm going to go through a presentation on temporary display signs. The purpose of this presentation is because we did receive a request from a council member seeking to allow flexibility for new businesses to be able to display signage for a longer period of time than our ordinance currently allows. And so considering that request, what we looked at were what were our provisions currently in place that associated most closely with that? And a lot of that has to do with banners that businesses place and some of the sign types that we'll discuss in this presentation. And so we're bringing this to the full council to get input from the full council on this issue and your input on moving forward. So I just want to go through an overview of temporary display signs. So that's the term that we use. Basically, it's banners, banner permits, banner signs. That's what it is. So right now, what's on the slide right now are our current allowances. Temporary displays allow businesses to promote by placing banners, small balloons, pennants, streamers on their buildings, businesses. Permits are required for a business to incorporate this type of signage. Currently, they're limited to no more than fifteen consecutive calendar days, so basically two weeks, and no more than sixty total calendar days in a single year. Where can they be displayed? Currently, for banners and all of these sign types, they're limited to only being placed on a building. So I know we have a lot of businesses that want to get their message closer to the street, closer to traffic. The current regulations restrict them to only being permitted to place it on a building wall. In addition to that, they're limited to only one. And then there's size limitations based on the amount of the building that that business covers. So possible regulations that we looked at with the Planning and Zoning Commission include expanding what's considered to be a temporary display. So in what's presented to you on the board or on the slide would continue to allow banners as temporary displays, but expanding that to include feather flags. And I have a picture in the slide for anyone who's not familiar with the feather flag, but I think we all are. This also would include inflatable devices and other advertising material. This would require the display of a permit. So currently, if a business pulls a banner permit, they receive a permit. It's all electronic, so they can print it out at their discretion, but there's not a requirement that they print it and post it anywhere. There's not a decal that's printed or posted on the sign itself. So basically, it's all invisible, except for the business knowing, you know, whether or not they pulled that permit. So here are some examples of possible regulations. Wall-mounted banner signs to continue to permit that, continue to restrict it to no more than one per business on a building, so in a shopping center. Each business within that shopping center would still be permitted to place a banner. Expanding it to allow for ground-mounted banners. So, excuse me, so placing the banner closer to the street or placing it freestanding on the business's property. Giving permission for feather flags, and the top picture there shows some example of feather flags. Some businesses that incorporate feather flags tend to want to put them in sequence so that you get the gist of it as you're driving down the road. So regulations could be flexible to allow for feather flags, but putting some limitations on the total number, the total number on a property, so you don't have an influx within that view. Inflatable signs. We know that there are certain businesses, certain business types, and I think the inflatable tubes are some of the more common ones. We have little hand movements that we do to kind of describe those. Some are fans, some are not fans. We have all kinds that businesses try to do, but currently they are not permitted per our sign code. So this would be consideration for allowing some level of inflatable signs for businesses. And then what you could do as well is prohibit, you know, certain combinations of signage because our sign ordinance is designed to prevent clutter, to, you know, allow for clear visibility. You know, I know that we have a lot of businesses, you know, post-pandemic that have utilized signs a little bit more lenient than our ordinance allows. But generally, when you go to other communities, you can tell when you're in Missouri City as opposed to other communities because of the sign regulations. So your sign regulations really do affect the character of the community, the place of the community, and so placing those kind of restrictions on there to help achieve that desire. So other possible regulations are on the timeframe, extending the amount of time, and you can do it by a sign type, you know, or you can do it collectively for all temporary displays. But to the request that we originally had, taking a look at that fifteen-day, two-week period and extending it to a thirty-day period, that could be applied just to banners, or it could be applied to different types of signs. And so then I'll open it up for discussion or questions.
We are going to go ahead and start with Councilmember Boni.
Actually, Mayor, can I defer to Councilmember Maru?
Oh, you can go.
Well, I was going to ask you a question, so I assumed that you were going to speak to why you wanted to have this discussion.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. First of all, I think this council has always been pro-business. We all say, "Local shop, local," and we actually do go visit businesses. Over the course of the last few years, certain businesses have struggled. We have a new burger joint on Highway Six that hides behind a tree line, and no one really knows it's there. The great place called, well, I'll leave the name out, has decided to open up for breakfast, yet no one really knows that he serves breakfast. So the concept of having breakfast now served is an idea. So it's really a way for the businesses to promote their brand and let people know that they're open. There was a liquor store at one point at Cartwright and Dulles that used banners, and he saw a fifteen percent increase in sales by just putting banners on the corner of the street. So I was just looking for a tool to help businesses drive growth, at least at that initial state, and then, you know, kind of peel it away. To be honest, I am not a fan of the inflatables. I think those are a little bit extreme. I think it poses electrical problems when people extend, you know, extension cords across parking lots, but I am a fan of moving away from just having on the building and having feathers and other stuff. Does that help?
I recognize in Council, Mayor Pro Tim Clauser.
Yes. Thank you, Jennifer. So two questions I have, and then a comment. The first one is, this would just be for new businesses or for any business in Missouri City?
So the request came in focused primarily on new businesses, but the reality of what we see and receive and experience are all businesses on some level are when going to utilize it. So the temporary displaced time regulations are all businesses within the city, not just limited to a new startup.
Okay. And then as far as the sixty-day limit, so fifteen days for no more than sixty days, right, at a time, fifteen days at a time? Would that require, would each occurrence require a separate permit?
Yes.
Okay. My question would be keeping up with that because business one sees, "Oh, my neighbor has a sign. Let me go get my signs." Which leads me to my next point. How are we going to truly regulate the signage so that we don't look like other neighboring cities with signs everywhere, and then we're pulling resources from the city to go and police that, pull those signs down or get them pulled down, and then we're just chasing signs? So I would like, I guess, a better process in place or a defined process in place so that we can have some real regulations around that. But I'm in full support of supporting our small businesses. We just, we got to figure out a way to do that so we're not cluttering the city.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Riley.
Yes, Jennifer, thank you for the details of the presentation. Mayor Pro Tim had a lot of my same questions and concerns. The one statement I want to make, I'm not a fan of the inflatables for a multitude of reasons. And so, not to disrespect anybody's taste on them, but I would prefer not to add that as a part of the component of the temporary signs. The other concern that I have is also the same, is how are we going to regulate this? And is it possible to set a timeline? Like, some businesses, some companies do like a certain time period of advertisement where you have, like, the billboards, you have to start on this particular day, and it ends on this particular day. That could be a possible option so that our staff is not, you know, chasing down signs every day of the week or every, you know, possible time of the month, and maybe just say if you start on this particular, the time period is from this particular, the first to the fifth, and then it ends on this particular timeframe. So can you explore that as an option as well? And then the last question that I have is the size of the actual banners. Are they going to be restricted to based on how much, you know, fencing there is, how much sidewalk area, how much land in the easement, and where would these be posted at if they don't have a fence or, you know?
So, on the maintenance side for both, so Neighborhood Services Director Walter Gant and I have been discussing that, and will continue to have those conversations in preparing and presenting to the commission and then to the council on proposed regulations. One thing I will say is part of the displaying the permit or putting a decal either on the sign or on the business is part of raising that visibility. Part of the challenge that we've had previous is, like I said, the permit was required, you know, for those that required permits, but the permit was invisible, you know, to the business and to the public. And even, and then for our staff that is out there trying to enforce, the challenge is, is trying to figure out what's legitimate and what's not, and then the time it takes to try to investigate that. So part of, you know, this plan going forward is make it more visible in terms of the permissions, the timeframes, and then that way, not just the code enforcement staff, but any staff, any person, you know, that comes across it, you see very plain the timeframe, you know, that was established for it. So that's, that's one part of it. To your point, your second question, remind me.
I don't know. No, it was dealing with, like, the space, the size.
The sizes. So what is proposed here is twofold. So yes, because the city can regulate when it comes to signs, keep in mind, so the speech of the sign, we can't regulate. That's protected speech, but the city can regulate size, location, duration, and things like that. And so what you could do is there are other types of temporary signs that are permitted as freestanding signs. So I know a lot of people see kind of like the real estate signs that are out there on commercial businesses that are of a certain size or like on construction site, so they may post a freestanding sign. This could follow that because you have some distance requirements in terms of a sign on that, on a property has to be a certain distance away from each other, has to be a certain distance away from permanent signs. So at, you know, you basically do it so that businesses have the opportunity, but you don't have the clutter, you know, along the roadway. So you could do it that way. What's presented here models that, so you have a maximum square footage associated with that sign. Here, I think we presented thirty-two square feet for the maximum square footage associated. You can look at whether or not that's sufficient, whether that's too large, you know, too small. We can talk about kind of the size parameters with it, but you can't establish that with this, with these regulations.
And will there be a limitation of how many can be in one section, one block? Then my other question is, when they're putting these signs out, say they're putting these feather flags, or they're wanting like the bigger, where you put posts in there, how do they address when they're putting that in the easement if there's areas in it that they shouldn't be driving in large stakes or things like that?
So you can do it two ways. So if a permit is required, then that means that a plan review would be required, so either a survey or a site plan showing that. Part of those parameters is that they can show, you know, because if they're placing one of these types of signs, then the property should have been plotted, you know, the property has a business operating on it, so they should have available, you know, kind of what some of those easement dimensions are. And at least for that presentation, that would kind of give them kind of some distances that they have to be away from certain physical features on the property.
And then will this also apply to, like, yard signs?
For residential or for commercial?
For commercial, because, you know, we see a lot of those yard signs posted in the easement, and so will they have to do a permit for yard signs?
For a commercial property, it has to fall into a category that is either requires a permit or is conditionally exempt. And if it doesn't fall into either one of those categories, then they should not be posting it on a commercial property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Boni.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to kind of get a better understanding because currently with our temporary sign permit, and I think we relaxed it some after COVID where we allowed like feather signs and stuff like that, right?
Right.
So are we looking to potentially just mimic what we did, you know, as we were dealing with COVID? Because I mean, if that's the case, I think that we could probably stick to what we did then because that seemed to be acceptable for staff and council at that time. What would be different from what we did then and what is, I guess, what you're seeking direction on now?
So somewhat, so that, this would be a permanent, you know, change.
No, I'm just talking about process-wise, not, I mean, I understand it would be a permanent.
You're putting a little bit more shape to it because, and we can pull what we did for that pandemic period, but this would, this would give a little bit more shape, so in terms of like the sizes, in terms of the number, in terms of that, the timeframe, it puts a little bit more shape in it that we had there. When we did that, it was just kind of a relaxation of what was existing as opposed to new allowances that they were, that they were able to tap into.
With that, I think that, I mean, because we currently have the wall-mounted banner signs in our current regulation, the only thing that I would probably be in favor of are the feather flags as an option and limiting the number of how many per, I guess, property is allowed, because if you have a strip center and you have seven, eight, twelve businesses in that strip center, and all of them apply to up to three feather signs, that's thirty-six, you know, in front of that one facility, and it'd just be a nightmare.
Right.
So I mean, I'm okay with maximum of three signs on a single property. And, you know, what's being recommended here as far as the no more thirty, no more than thirty-two square feet in the area with a maximum of ten feet in height, I mean, excuse me, twelve feet in height, I'm looking at the ground mounted, excuse me, not to exceed twelve feet in height on three feather signs per single property. But that would be the only, you know, temporary sign that I would be open to. Now, I guess, Councilmember Rulis, was the timeframe something that you wanted to change as well, or are you okay with that remaining the same?
I'm okay with remaining the same, especially if they can just, throughout the year, if there's a limit, so I'm okay with it.
And that concludes my comments.
Recognizing Councilmember Emery.
Yes, as far as the permitting, and I'm going to speak pretty much towards the feathers signs. If you have a business that only requires the, only requests the signs to be allowed on weekends or maybe just on a Saturday, how would you handle that from a standpoint of permitting and the number of occurrences? How, have you considered that, and if so, what kind of feedback do you have on it?
So now I would actually ask for your input on that, though, too, because from the regulation standpoint, the way it's written, it's a total of sixty calendar days. So basically, they'd be pulling permits for each three-day, you know, timeframe that they're trying to locate their signs, they're paying permit fees, you know, for each, you know, three-day timeline. So from a business standpoint, from, you know, I don't know if that's a workable, you know, kind of solution for them. You know, from a regulatory standpoint, they would be issuing permits for each one of those periods up to sixty calendar days.
Well, I guess, is there opportunity to maybe to look at that particular situation where you don't have to pull a permit, you know, it's, you know, what the days are that are being required or requested to have the banner sign? So if you can put out in a calendar what days do you have to have a permit, or could you work around that and say one permit for these number of days on this particular day through the year?
You mean on the permit itself?
Yeah.
You could, you could. They would just be paying for each increment that they're pulling that permit for. So it wouldn't be one permit that allows for, you know, that whole sixty days. They would be pulling permits for each one of those segments. Now, paper-wise, it could go on one permit.
Yeah, but we're talking about the cost of the permit.
Mm-hmm.
What are we charging now, or what's our fee?
I believe it's twenty-five dollars, but I'll bring that back to you all. It's a nominal fee. It's not, it's not a size, it's not.
It's nominal, but for fifty-two days.
Right.
You know, if you have one for every, yeah, for every week, then it kind of mounts up and defeats, to me, the idea that we're trying to make our small businesses successful and not, you know, throw additional cost burden on them for something that they're trying to use to promote business.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure, you know, what kind of appetite there is to do something like that for, I say, a standard permit that would allow for, you know, a number of different days.
All right. Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Marulis.
Yep. So thank you, Jennifer and staff, for working through this. It's not perfect, but that's why we're here. I agree with Councilmember Emery. If somebody can come in and say, "Hey, you know, I want a spring break banner. I want a summer banner and a back-to-school banner. Here's my twenty-five bucks." That'd be kind of nice.
Okay.
What you said earlier is important, Jennifer, to shape it. Right now, it's the Wild West. People just put signs everywhere. They put the flying guys around, and then, you know, it's just a mess. So this is a way to shape it. We're controlling the types of signs. We're permitting it. We have record-keeping of it, and I think it's just a little cleaner. And so that's just a comment I wanted to make around shaping it because, again, people are just tossing signs out everywhere today, and the more visibility we have, the better our city looks compliance-wise. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Recognizing Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. Councilmember Marulis, thank you for bringing this to us, and Jennifer, thank you for the presentation. My comments more so do center around language, use of language on the signs. Here's my primary concern about the language because, like you stated, on the weekends is when we primarily get the phone calls. We've got the phone calls and pictures of banners that say, "Cheap cigarettes here." People are upset because that's what they're, that's what they're seeing. In terms of a sequence of signs, you know, I've driven around and I've seen the sequences, liquor, hardwood floors, e-cigs, all in the same strip center. So while I understand that there's protective speech, my question, I guess, is to legal, can we help shape some of what that speech should be?
I'm happy to provide legal advice and recommendations in an executive session.
Okay.
Or if you all would like to take a vote to authorize me to provide advice in this open forum, I'm able to do that as well.
Okay.
Mayor, if we could take it in executive session, I would appreciate it.
Sure. What?
That was going to be my motion.
Yeah. So.
Yes, I'm done.
So I just have one quick question. So for the existing businesses that are here, right? So I heard you say something about this is for everyone. So will that be the case for new businesses as long as they apply? They go through the same process of someone's been here for twenty years.
Right.
And they want to, they want to do this, they can.
Right.
Right? So we're not, I mean, we're not taking, we're not only accepting for new people.
Right. The recommendation would be to apply it to all businesses.
And what department will be the one that was looking at the date, like the thirty or sixty?
Development Services. It's a, it's a signed permit.
Okay. And then if someone has not passed, would that be your department, or would that be code enforcement that goes out there?
Working in combination with code enforcement.
All right. Sounds good. All right. Thank you. So, E. Joyce, I guess there's no, do we need to give any?
Just go to executive session.
You want to go to executive session on this item?
Yes, and so we actually have another executive session item as well. So if there's a motion in a second to go back to the closed executive session for the item four A, then when you make your announcement for the executive session, you can just say pursuant to five fifty-one point oh seven one, as well as the listed five fifty-one point zero seven four.
Okay. All right. So then go to number five, right? Item number five. So the time is six eleven P. M., and the City Council will now go into a closed executive session pursuant to section five five one point zero seven four and five five one point zero seven one of the Texas government code. Okay?
Welcome.
It's seven thirteen P. M. The City Council will now convene back into the City Council Special Meeting, and we're going to go ahead and recess this meeting at seven fourteen P. M. to take up the regular meeting. We're going to reopen the special meeting at ten thirty-two P. M. And are there any actions, items from a closed executive session?
Mayor, did we actually walk away with an action for number four? I know there was a lot of conversation, but do we have an action from that? We did? I just want to make sure we talked about fee structure, the limitations, the non-inflatables, and a basic catalog sign selection. Just make sure that that was discussed.
If I could, I'd add to that also the permitting, what, we can do some consolidation of permitting.
Temporary signs.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Jennifer. As far as items coming out of executive session, I move to refer the subject official to attend ethics training and further direct staff to provide additional ethics training to the entire City Council as a whole.
I'll second your motion.
So. There's been a motion by Councilmember Marulis, seconded by Councilmember Brown Marshall, and no other. Can you do a vote?
Absolutely. Mayor Alicat?
Yes.
Member Brown Marshall?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Clauser?
Yes.
Member Riley?
Yes.
Member Boni?
Yes.
Member Marulis?
Yes.
Member Emery?
Yes.
The motion carries seven to zero.
With, so we're going to, E. Joyce, I think I need to come back and do, where do we end this ended, or?
You are in the special meeting. You just need to adjourn at this point unless you will have additional.
There's no other further business. Or P. M. The time is 10:34 or PM.
Are you sleepy?
No. That was me.
There was no action item 4.
They already did it. Get out. Break it down.
Two-hour time.
Yeah. So the time you move all our property at 35.
Is there any other business?
Yes.